Good morning. Today is September 2nd. It is now 10 o'clock and we'll have a call to order. Eldon Callen, Ed Hawkins, and Tom Bloom are here. If I ask at this time you rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, consents and approvals?
We have 44 honorations, $48,469.07. Fiduciary orders of September 2nd, minutes of August 26. General County Fund vouchers, $28,257.48. Coal Severance Fund, $110. Kemp Monthly, $3,003,2708. Chestnut Ridge Park, $3,0483.47. Mason Dixon Park, $259.89. Magistrate Court Fund, $122.83. 911 Cash, $685.80 for a total of $36,246.55. And I have budget revisions. We've received the check for the coal waste producing counties grants and I'm moving that into receipts and I'm putting it back out into courthouse in Danson dredging which is for our courthouse square project and the locks.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. I just need to discuss a unique situation, just so you're aware of. I met with Judy yesterday under the fiduciary order books and the first time ever they she received a will for Walter Tillman, aka Walter Tillman Jr. without probate and then another person showed up with the exact, on the exact same day with another will. So they, they put that one also in. So they have two different wills written on the same day. So she had to submit it without probate. So if you wonder why, they're both in there. And she said it'll end up going to court to figure out which one supersedes. But it's on the same day and it's never happened before. But I did want you to know, aware of that. Okay, may I have, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes. Okay. Comments from the public? At this time, we'll ask that you rise, state your name and address, and you're more than welcome to speak on any issue that you would like to. Feel free to stand up and speak. Is there anyone here who wants to speak? Great.
Hi, I'm Matthew Spencer, 364 Harvard Drive, Morgantown, West Virginia. I spoke with the auto manufacturer Tesla Motors recently to see if they'd be interested in building an electric vehicle charging stations in the area. And they seem particularly interested in the new development near University Town Center. And there are some amenities that they said that they would prefer to be there that I wanted to bring to your attention. That mostly being direct access to a highway, wifi in the area if it's possible, and restrooms. But I wanted to pass that information along in case that is a possibility for the area as it's being developed.
Yeah, that, that'd be a great addition to that project and our future plans over there. If you have any representatives that wants to inquire further, they're, they're free to contact me. And I'd be happy to put, put them in with the different property owners there that might be interested in providing them a place to set up.
Okay, I'll pass that information along.
Yeah, I'd appreciate if, make sure you meet with Eldon because he's also on the Economic Development Authority and he would take it to Holly Childs and that group. And I think it's something that, I appreciate you even looking into it and that's the kind of things we need to learn more about. So after the meeting, because it shouldn't be too long if you want to speak with him, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Sure.
My name is Susan Elkin, 408 Coen Creek Road. I have a small farm just outside of town and I don't understand the complete thing, but I would like the option of understanding and signing up for the programs that will help preserve farms. The farm what I have left, left goes back to the Morgans, all traced. Evan Morgan was given 1,000 acres by the then Governor of Virginia and he was the son of David Morgan. It's referred to as the Morgan place and I have the original log cabin there. After I go away, I don't know what's going to happen to it, but with all of the development going on. And there are pockets of development around, there's plenty of that, but this is a very beautiful valley if you look at it just off of Interstate 60 East going east at about mile marker one and a half. Anyway, is that, I would like to make sure that there isn't a moment of greed or gee, that sounds like a good idea where it will be turned into some sort of division and lord knows what else after I'm gone that will stay in the farm. My neighbor Judy Sauber can't be here, but she also would like to participate.
I, yes, if you would, please. This has not come up for a vote yet, so it's not a possibility to put your name on a list. However, what I would like is you have support of this, please send an email to county commission, that's moncom@aal.com. And if you have anybody else, as well as other members of the public who wish to state their opinion either for or against farmland or green space preservation. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming in. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Well, that's double the amount that we usually have, so I want to appreciate you coming in.
I'll be a double zero.
Well, yeah, that's true. That's, I did the two times zero, that's right. Well, I just, I just flunked new math. Okay.
But you're right. It's 200% English.
Nothing, yes. Okay, Renetta McClure and Grants? And how much of thousands of dollars are we going to get today?
Well, actually, sorry, Mike, where's your camera? We have the DUI grant for the Governor's Highway Safety Program that covers multiple programs within the Governor's Highway Safety Program. This year, we've got two-pronged, this is two-pronged.
Okay.
Okay, first we've got the application that was completed and we're requesting $202,000 to cover federal fiscal year 2016, beginning October 1 of 2015, ending September 30 of 2016. So I'd like the commission, please approve the president's signature on that. And then I also have-
Is there a resolution with that or?
Well, that's the second part.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
In, in the days following the application, we already received our award notice. So we've already been awarded the $202,000 to cover the fiscal year. So I do have the contract and also a resolution.
Okay.
So however you want to do that.
Now, does a resolution approve the acceptance of the grant?
Yes.
Okay, so we need two motions.
Yes.
Okay, we, I move to authorize the president to sign the application for this grant.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, sign the application. Now, can you read the resolution rewarding the grant?
Oh, okay.
The Montague County Commission met on Wednesday, September 2nd, 2015, with the Corps of Presidents, passed the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Montague County Commission hereby authorizes the Honorable Thomas C. Bloom, President of the Montague County Commission, to act on its behalf to enter into contractual agreement with the West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles to apply, receive, and administer grant funds pursuant to the provisions of the West Virginia Governor's Highway Safety Program.
Move to approve the resolution is read.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi, Mr. Mike Callen, would you like to come on up here? And we're a little early, but I hope you don't mind. Request for letter of support for higher education. Ask them, we have to.
Should I sit down?
Yeah, whatever's comfortable for you.
Okay, well, I'll stand, yeah.
Okay.
What these letters involve is a nationwide effort to delay and review a set of Department of Education rules that affect higher education. The rules, the basis for the rule is supposed to be to assist students, to make sure students don't get into more lung death inappropriate for their education, which is, certainly we're all in favor of that. But there's some rather curious and controversial features to the rules. For instance, they don't apply to students attending public four-year colleges like a WVU. They don't apply to students attending private institutions like, say, West Virginia Wesleyan or Alderson Brothers. Even though four-years college students make up the largest group of higher education there, they don't, they don't cover them. They also don't cover public community colleges. Actually, all they recover, all they actually cover is the group I represent, which are the taxpaying schools. I represent our state association and as its representative, I work with national issues. The, the rules themselves, there is actually bipartisan support in Congress to delay the rules because the Higher Education Act under which they're authorized is up for renewal this year. And Congress would like to review the rules, but the department is helping push them and implementing them, even though their Congress is reauthorizing the underlying statute as we speak. There's bipartisan support, both Republicans as well as Democrats. There are members of the Congressional Black Caucus that have written with White House opposing these rules. The National Black Chamber of Commerce opposes these rules. They would have serious impact on quite a few populations in the country. All we're asking you to do, we're not asking you to rule on the merits of the rule or oppose the rules, we're simply asking you to support the effort that would, support the bills that would delay the rules until the Congress has a chance to have public hearings on these and, and review them. In fact, the chairman of the, the committee that handles this in the Senate has already said he wants to take this concept, but it's, and broaden it to cover all institutions and make it more effective than what it is now. So that's all, that's all we're asking you to do, lend support to our efforts to simply delay the rules so Congress can have public hearings on them.
Do you want to speak on it or ask any questions?
Why do we care? Why does it affect us, I should say?
Well, last week I heard Department of Commerce Secretary Keith Burdell on the radio on news several times saying that one of our deficiencies in this state is having an adequate workforce adequately trained. This will impact the mid-level jobs. If you look at higher education, there's our type schools and public community colleges are really about it when it comes to training your, your mid-level jobs. You have a few other groups like labor unions have apprentice programs, but basically we're about it. And these will have, can have potentially pretty, pretty negative impact on that.
I knew they answered the question. It's one of those questions you ask that you already know the answer to, but I appreciate it being on the record. I, I think this is a very important thing and a big responsibility of any government is to, to help develop and make possible the development of a good workforce, keep economic development in the community vitalized. So I would move that we sign the letter asking that this rule be delayed and be properly heard by, by the necessary committees of Congress.
I do agree, and second.
I also would agree. And I also want to thank you for bringing this to our attention because it's people like you, so we understand what's going on because we can't always know what's, what's going on. But I appreciate that. So it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Do you, I need a blue pen.
Do you want to take this with you?
Oh, thank you. Okay. It just amazes me that the State Department of Education, or not, the Federal Department wants to move forward without even having all the information and that's what concerns me. That's what's happened in the past.
On so many other issues.
On so many other issues that they're dealing with right now and it could resolve so many issues.
In my, in my report today, I'm talking about another one.
Yeah.
The one they're pushing through on the law.
The housing rules in Washington.
Yes. Well, and you have bipartisan support, but to me it's just logical. I mean, but that's why it won't, that's why you have a problem because it's logical.
Right. Logic doesn't rule Washington.
No.
They've been trying to push one rule through after another. They don't, they don't want our elected officials to look at them for some reason.
Well, what, now what did somebody say? We've got to pass the bill and then see what's in it?
Yeah, yeah.
Pass it so we can figure out what's in it.
Well, that's, that's what always worries me about the West Virginia legislature and they meet for two months and they'll be honest and say, look, they just got all these bills in the last day and they don't read them. Yeah.
It's wigged out.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll wait a second to see, because she has to give a copy. Does anyone have any specific correspondence before I ask Diane? Okay, we'll wait. Thank you. And do we have any correspondence?
No.
Oh, okay. Do we, we're now on the unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business?
No.
I just want to bring up one topic so I could have you put in the paper. There's been a number of questions about recycling, whether to be recycling during football Saturdays. Yes. We will be for the next eight weeks, again, it's at Walmart from 7 to 11, but people were questioning whether there would be, and there's not going to be any problem, we still are doing single stream, so I'd appreciate that.
Four Saturdays a month.
Four Saturdays a month, yes. Yeah. And we have the website if they have any questions. Okay, thank you. New business, proclamation, childhood cancer awareness month.
Unfortunately, the gentleman that was here last year with us could not make it today, Stephen Firestein, so I'll read this if you'd like.
Sure.
Proclamation, whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report, cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. This tragic disease is detected in nearly 15,000 of our country's young people each and every year. Whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas founded 20 years ago by Stephen Firestein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor family, the American Cancer Fund for Children Incorporated, the Kids Cancer Connection Incorporated are dedicated to helping these children and their families. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psycho-social services to children undergoing cancer treatment at WVU Children's Hospital in Morgantown, CAMA Women's and Children's Hospital in Charleston, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor nationwide courageous kid recognition award ceremonies and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore, the Montague County Commission does hereby proclaim September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Montague County and urge all citizens to be especially aware of children everywhere suffering from this terrible disease, dated September 2nd, 2015.
Move to approve the proclamation.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes.
You want a blue.
I can have your red, blue pen again. I don't know what happened to my blue pen.
I had one.
Yeah.
I think they all gathered on the corner here on my desk. Housekeeping.
Well, at least we knew the cleaning. Is there any other new business for anyone?
No.
Okay, seeing none? Any reports from any elected officials in the audience?
Definitely.
Yes, all right, we have some.
I told you last week that I'd have a report for you on the online credit card and e-check payments. And as of midnight, actually 11:59 on September 1st, which was the last moment to get your first half discount, we collected $523,564.82 online.
Wow.
It was a total of 1,222 payments.
That's good.
And I do have for you, this is just a-
And how does that compare to last, I mean, with people coming in? Do you have any?
Well, yeah, I can tell you that as well. That's just a breakdown of the types of payments that people are choosing. Actually, this year for the first half, we collected $40,628,718.22. That was since July the 15th. So it's only about, we're collecting about 1.28% online.
Right.
The other was done in the office and you can ask security for the 1,100-plus people that were in the courthouse on Monday, and almost all of them came to the office. And just want to thank all the taxpayers for their patience. I mean, they were lined up down the hall all day. Thanks to the tax office employees who, we've been working 14, 12 and 14-hour days. It's a good sign. There's, there's still a bit of mail downstairs that will run as postmark.
Right.
So the people will still get their discount, but it seems that collections are up this year, so. And not just the number, not just the dollar amounts, but the number of payments that people are paying, so. And just if, Ben, if you would also include that people have until September 10th to pay their 14s, their delinquent 14s, because after the 10th of September, then they will incur publication and interest costs. Talk about that.
Okay. So do you have any questions?
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, excellent. It's good to see.
Thanks for going to your staff.
And you know, a lot of people are concerned for the employers in the tax office because they say, well, it's going all online. This shows that it, that is not the truth. And in fact, in this county, we show an increase of about 2,000 additional tickets every year.
Wow.
So this took care of 1,200 of them, but still they're, they're additional all the time. But thank you and thank you all for providing us with the funds to purchase the software and the training and I think it's going to be a good fit for us.
Great benefit to the citizens.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. All right, we could go for a record. Okay, reports from county commission?
I'd like to report that on Monday, Commissioner Callen and I both attended the Route 2I-68 Conference. That was in Moundsville. Commissioner Maddox did speak and he did recognize the plight of this area, this region. Also personally spoke that he had been on Route 7 and 250. So he also vaguely probably promised that there would be some more additional attention paid to that. Now, what comes of it, I don't know yet, but let's be hopeful. I met yesterday with Holly Childs, our, the Montague County Development Director. Really, there's going to be some great things happening out there as well. And lastly, as I mentioned earlier, please send your email regarding, to county commission regarding your feelings on my farmland preservation. This is how we will be able to gauge whether or not it would be a viable entity or not. That's moncom@aal.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
A couple of things. I don't know, maybe you've noticed it, maybe you haven't, I haven't seen any local reporting on it. I've talked in the past about the water rule and the rule that the EPA is trying to pass where basically in West Virgi, it would very much adversely affect West Virginia because just about, there are springs all over the place. So you can create flowing water very easily. And the way the rule could be defined, even though they say that they would never use it that way, if I was putting a flower garden in my backyard and dug up a spring, I'd have to contact the Corps of Engineers and the EPA to approve my putting in what plants I plant around that spring that I dug up. I mean, it, I'm talking about the extreme, but lawyers deal in extremes. We look at what would happen. The water rule, a U.S. District Court Judge in North Dakota has issued a temporary injunction to freeze that water rule for 13 states. NACO, which, NACO is still trying to figure out whether that District Court ruling will create a temporary injunction for all states, which would include us. We're not one of the 13 states in that district, in North Dakota's district, but, but it's, it's a good sign that other people are taking seriously the, this rulemaking, which is basically creation of new laws and new powers by different agencies without this, in my opinion, without the statutory support to do so. So I was glad to see the judge did that. I wanted to, I've been talking about that in the past, so I wanted to give you an update on that and I'll keep you posted as I hear more. Yes, we had, we had Dave Yoder and Holly Childs and Commissioner Hawkins and I all were at Route, Route 2 Interstate 68 authority. That was a good session. There was a big turnout. They said, well, one of the largest ones. Someone said that they thought there was 100 people in attendance there. So that's commissioners from, from all the regions. I got to see a lot of the other commissioners, plus, plus local officials. And Senator Lenhart was also there. As Commissioner Hawkins said, Secretary Maddox recognized that Region 4 has been having problems. He cited Region 4 as one of three regions that's been having problems. He's focused on that. He knows what the problems are. He's working to fix them. So, so I, you know, that's three regions out of 10 regions that are having, having problems. So before you can solve any problem, you got to identify the problem. So he, in his discussion, he talked about, he has identified the problem in this and two other regions and he's working to fix that. So I appreciate that recognition and moving forward. Along, along that line, I don't have the letter in front of me right now. There was a petition or letter sent to, to the secretary and a number of other people concerning Van Vorsch Road. That, that is, is a problem and, and I would like for us to, they've, they've already contacted the region, the Department of Highways, but I'd like us in future meetings to possibly talk a little bit more about the problems with Van Vorsch Road. I know we have no authority or nothing over Van Vorsch Road, part of it's inside the city and all that, but we've got 1,500, I checked with Bill Austin, we got a 1,502 traffic count in 2014 that used that road. 1,502 automobiles use that road every day. That's a lot of traffic going up and down that road with ditches, without sidewalks and everything. So I just wanted to recognize that I took note of that. As Vice Chair of MPO, I reached out to Bill Austin, so I wanted to make sure you do what I was doing on that and see if we couldn't follow up and maybe add some support or even get the MPO working on that a little bit more. The other thing I wanted to mention was the West Virginia Tech moving out of Montgomery. I don't have, I, I'm not questioning the decision of WVU. Well, the point I'm trying to, well, the point I want to make here is this is a prime example, if you've ever been into Montgomery, try to travel from Canawha or Beckley or even Flatwoods into Montgomery. It's a difficult trip. The infrastructure's not there. That is one of the things, plus the lack of deferred, the lack of maintenance on their buildings and not deferred maintenance that costs millions and millions of dollars when you put things off. That is proof, in my opinion, that is proof why we've got to focus on everything. Not only maintenance of our current roads, and that's a big problem, but developing new infrastructure, developing, developing support systems. We got to have the infrastructure to do that. And if we don't, if we don't plan for the future, for, for new development, that's what happens. Communities, and they were talking about the community dying, Montgomery dying. Whether Montgomery dies or not, I hope not. I mean, we, we need, our state needs to build every place. And I'm, I'm a big one that everyone should win. And I think everything's possible if you work, work extremely hard at it. So I think Montgomery should open up a lot of eyes in West Virginia, the moving of West Virginia Tech. I don't blame WVU, understand the financial concerns, but I do blame, blame the fact that years of failing to meet the basic infrastructure needs is sort of, will be a death now, not, maybe not only of this community, but the rest of the state. So I think we need to keep focused on that. So I wanted to bring that out. That's all I have.
Okay. Similar to, I only have one comment. I personally want to thank Brian Kachaba. I've been working with him on behalf of the county commission on getting our roads worked on. And we just had most recently a serious situation off of Higgins Road, Glasscock Hollow that I guess has a, a bridge that's just horrible and three different buses were going across it every day. They did go and temporarily fix it, but like you- But like you said, that brings up the bigger problem, which is we have, I'm very concerned, and I know the two of you are. We now have the students on the buses. They're on Green Bag Road, Van Vors, Willadale, Beechers, just to name a few, plus those others, that it's become a serious safety problem when you have to take a bus and drive on the other side of the road. And I really hope that we can address these issues with the state. I'm very concerned that unless we do something now in this year, and it's an election year, that this could really cause serious problems for us in the future. So I agree with you on that. Does anyone have anything else? Move, oh, okay, hold on.
Okay.
Oh, okay, good. Seeing that there's no one else, and we're moving quickly, I ask for a move to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We be adjourned.